Monday, December 7th at 7:34, we are on a WebEx teleconference meeting. I will call to order the Brainerd City Council meeting and we will start with roll call.
Pritchett. Pritchett. Bevins.
Here.
W Erickson.
Here.
T Erickson.
Here.
Lambert.
Here.
Stunich.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
And Bedeau.
Here.
Okay, that brings us to the next item of the agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. I don't know if anybody saw the email come through, but the appeal for the Wonderland Park Road remodeling permit denial was withdrawn by the issuing the appeal. So I'd like to get the agenda approved, but removing number five.
So moves Bevins.
Lambert's second.
A motion by Bevins, a second by Lambert, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Pritchett.
Here.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunich.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. That brings us to item number four, the consent calendar. Notice to public, all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will all be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted.
Move to adopt Bevins.
Second.
A motion by Bevins and a second by Pritchett to adopt. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, this is Jan. All I want to say is I appreciate the having the bills to take in consent for. Um, that's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, I think, I think that's good. That's what the quorum calls for. I'm glad we're doing it. But I'll just say I'm going to vote no. Because I don't think we should have four polling stations in the city of Brainerd. I think we should have eight, so I'm actually going to go no on the consent calendar tonight. But that's just my opinion. Any other discussion? Connie.
Thank you, Council President. If we would go back to eight polling locations in 2021, which there is no election scheduled in 2021, we would have to pay the price of, we would have to pay the cost of sending out new notices. And my fear would be then people would be confused of where they go and vote when we have to send out notices again in 2022 when we read district. So therefore, keeping the same polling places as what we used in the 2020 election.
Explanation, this could have been on the personnel and finance committee agenda.
Was in the agenda request, but that's okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunich.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. That brings us to what was item number six on the printed agenda presentation. Six A is Northland Arboretum. Who is here to present for that?
That would be Candace Zimmerman, Executive Director.
All right, Candace, the floor is yours.
Well, everyone, thank you very much for the invitation to present today. Um, I do believe that a slideshow was sent out. Um, do we have a screen share of that, of that slideshow?
Do we? Sean, Jennifer, do we have the slideshow?
Do you have the slideshow? Um, I don't know if, if Sean can say if we can make Candace the host or if I just need to click through them, whatever you prefer.
Let's just have you click through them. Candace will just tell you next slide.
Okay, I will share my screen again.
Well, what I'm going to be sharing with you today is what I shared with membership just back in October during our annual meeting. Uh, so first slide is our Board of Directors. So you guys will see a couple of friendly faces on, um, on that second slide there. Our executive and finance committee is made up of a president, a vice president, a treasurer, and our secretary. And we do have, um, other Board of Directors currently on, uh, we do have openings currently for Board of Directors. So if there's anybody interested in getting, uh, getting involved in a nonprofit, uh, reach out to me, uh, Executive Director at the Northland Arboretum. Next slide. Apart from today's discussion, we're going to talk about what the current landscape looks like here at the Arboretum. Um, we'll take a brief look at our financials, go over our community dashboard, um, a brief overview of what our big fundraiser event, The Haunted Trail, looked like here in 2020, and then some goals for us looking ahead. Next slide. Next slide. So first, this is our team over at the ARB. So if you guys do happen to come visit, um, being a new director, it's always been great, um, having a good team, um, at the helm. So they have been very helpful for me since I started back in March at the beginning of the pandemic. Um, so I have Kelly Hughes there, um, that she's my admin and usually the person that you guys talk to if you reach out to the ARB. Uh, Rick Hines is our maintenance manager and in charge of the grounds and maintenance of our buildings. And he's been doing a fantastic job. He's been there about a year and a half. Shelley Stanley is currently our bookkeeper as well as our membership coordinator. We just recently hired a volunteer coordinator, um, to take over those responsibilities and her name is Bonnie. She didn't make the slide, I apologize. And then we recently, um, brought on an intern in October. Uh, she's a CLC student at the Natural Resources Department and she's been doing a fantastic job, um, helping out at the Arboretum. She's working on more educational programming and, um, curriculum based things for us. And she will be with us through May. Next slide. So just a reminder of what our mission is at the Northland Arboretum. We work off of three pillars over, um, at, uh, at our 520 acre preserve. So we concentrate on education, recreation, and conservation. And I'd like to just take a brief moment and describe each of those buckets. Um, so within education, I think this is really where things start, um, in terms of, um, getting people involved in natural resources and, and conservation efforts. So we go, we have everything from gardening 101 classes to beekeeping classes and hiking workshops that, um, that are normally put on by volunteers. And I think it's, uh, important for those who need to go and, uh, or keep going, especially within our youth population and getting younger kids involved at the ARB is one of the missions that I have, one of the goals that I have for the ARB, um, because those routines start young. And if we can get young people involved in the outdoors, it's not only great for their physical activity and for the environment itself, but it's great for mental health for the community as well. Um, our other buckets under recreation, um, we do have a 12-mile trail system at the ARB. Um, we do have, um, so that's opportunities for hiking, snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, all of that good stuff. And then our conservation efforts, um, we do have rare species on our grounds such as the lady slipper. Um, we have a jack pine savanna, which is, um, a rare habitat. There's only, um, five of those habitats in Minnesota right now and we're lucky to have one of them. And then we partner with the Nature Conservancy to make sure that we are following best practices when it comes to our conservation efforts as well. Next slide. So now we're going to go over what the current landscape looks like, um, during a pandemic, um, at the Arboretum. Next slide. So the first thing that I want to look, um, want to do all to see is our financial dashboard. As you can see, our revenue and expenses at first glance, um, looks okay during a pandemic year. Uh, we can see that on the revenue side, um, we had about 331,000 while our expenses came in at about 277,000. Um, what I will say, and this story is not currently telling, is that we were fortunate enough to receive a loan um, through the Payroll Protection, um, Act. And so that loan, around $37,000 of it, um, could potentially come out of that revenue side if it's not forgiven. So, um, just taking that into consideration when you're looking at those revenues versus expenses. And as you can see from the pie charts, most of our, um, revenue does come, um, from a few, uh, select buckets. We do get a significant amount, um, the city of Brainerd, so thank you guys for that. Um, we also do a lot of work around our events, um, as well as our grants and donations. Uh, facility rentals also, um, is a big bucket for us when it comes to, uh, revenue. And all of those are, some of those buckets are going to take a significant hit here in our new fiscal year as well. So our fiscal year starts on October 1st, um, and it goes until September 30th. So, um, while we're looking at these numbers, you can take that into consideration as well. Next slide. So where does that revenue come from? Um, a lot of the revenue, uh, some of our revenue does come from membership. So this is our current fee structure. We do have a student membership, um, which I think we could, uh, leverage some of our CLC students in, in that bucket. Um, but then most common, we do see individual memberships come through and we process. Um, and then of course, we have a dual membership, which is, um, two people. And then a dual plus two is kind of a membership option. Um, and then of course, we have that dog paw in the middle because we have our dog memberships as well, uh, for $5 that we tack on to, um, memberships if people end up walking their dogs with our. Next slide. So this is the trend in membership. I think it's important to look what, um, look at what a month by month looks like, um, as well as a year by year comparison. So we're looking at a, a month by month here for fiscal year 2020. And as you can see, the March, April, and May months early, we took a hit with membership. Um, that was just the start of COVID and the shutdown. Um, so naturally, we were going to see those decreases. Luckily, we saw an uptick in August, um, with membership. And then here at the start of the fiscal year, um, in October and November, we saw kind of a downside again. Um, so I think we're going to naturally have those ebb and flow with membership and we'll be able to tell over time, um, how that cash flow is going to be affecting the organization. Next slide. So these are gate fees. I definitely think this is an opportunity for revenue for the ARB as well. Um, you can see that the winter time, we don't get as many gate fees. We saw that uptick at the end of summer. I think a lot of people were anxious to get out and, um, do something outdoors before the school year started. Um, so we're expecting that that's the explanation for that uptick. Next slide. Our gift shop is another potential for, um, good revenue coming through the ARB. You will see that we had very little revenue in the, in the start of the shutdown back in March, April, and May. Um, the light green shows the revenue for the gift shop, um, uh, items overall. And then the darker green bars that you see in December, January, February, and a little bit in March, those are our ski passes, which we put under our gift shop revenue as well. Next slide. Uh, for facility rentals, um, you'll see that we, um, definitely had some months that were struggling with facility rentals. Our most common, um, or our biggest month should have been July and August. Um, but because of COVID and the amount of events, um, reunions, graduation parties that had to be canceled, um, unfortunately, we just didn't see that revenue coming through this year. Um, but we do have, um, dates being booked for next summer, so we're hopeful that we will be able to, um, bounce back from that. Next slide. Some grants that came through for fiscal year. Um, we did get some smaller grants coming through for our Victory Garden, which, um, was a project done by our master gardeners. They did a fantastic job, um, kind of pivoting what we usually did as gardening 101 classes and decided to turn those, um, turn those gardens into, um, Victory Gardens, which donated fresh produce to the Salvation Army in town, um, so that people would be able to have fresh food, um, available to them throughout the pandemic. So that was a great project that we had going on. Um, as you will see, the payroll protection program, um, that was, um, a loan. We're currently waiting for forgiveness on that and we have applied, so we're just kind of in a waiting game there. Uh, Sourcewell is actually providing funds for our internship. So our intern Amanda that started in October is funded through them. We did get a small master naturalist scholarship for the Master Naturalist Course. And then Crowing Energize also contributed towards our Victory Garden. Next slide. As far as community donations, um, last fiscal year, it looks like we had a really good year in December and January. It's typical that we see end of the year, um, donations come in and we are seeing that again this year. So we're hopeful that we're on track for donations. Um, we did see an uptick in September of this year because we did a silent auction online. Um, it was fairly successful, so hopefully we'll be doing that year after year as well. Um, so that is, um, the explanation for that, um, uptick in September. Next slide. Just a brief overview of what our haunted trail has looked like over the last couple of years. So, um, we've gone from about a $15,000 revenue to, um, we jumped and did a very good year this year, um, despite the pandemic. So 53,000, um, really helped prepare us for, um, a potential loss in facility rentals and donations and anything else, um, here going forward due to the pandemic. Um, some of the, uh, protocols that we had in place were, um, limited ticket sales. We did increase the price of the tickets, um, in order to accommodate that. Um, and we overall had a very successful outdoor COVID-friendly event. So it was nice to see the community support us in that way. Next slide. Here's our volunteer hours. So, um, typically the trend is that we see a lot more volunteer hours in April and May. Um, we did get some volunteers out, um, throughout the summer, but not nearly as many as we've seen in previous years. So now that we have our volunteer coordinator onboard, um, she's going to be planning for a spring event, hopefully recruiting some new blood into our, um, in our volunteer base, um, and getting them out into those gardens and cleaning them up. Uh, we didn't have nearly as many gardeners out there, so the gardens do need a little bit of help here this spring and summer. Um, but we're confident that we have, um, good groups coming in, um, and some solid interest. Next slide. So looking ahead, next slide. This is our financial dashboard or our budget for the, this current fiscal year, so starting October 1st. We were very conservative when it came to revenue, especially around the facility rentals and events revenue. Um, so you'll see that there's a deficit potentially of $54,000. Um, a lot of this could be made up in some of the buckets I spoke of earlier, um, such as increase in membership, uh, increase in gift shop, and I'm really focusing on the grants and donations side of things, um, in order to make up for that potential loss here this fiscal year. So now that we are kind of done with the doom and gloom side of things, I want to focus on what our strengths are at the ARB. So our, we have fantastic amenities at the Arboretum. It's 520 acres of just beautiful area that people can, um, walk around in, ski, snowshoe. Um, we also have some really great infrastructure built, so we have gazebos and great picnic tables, um, and pavilions out there for people to, um, to utilize. Um, and I'd really like to see the Arboretum be, um, kind of a must-see destination in the Brainerd Baxter area because we're smack dab in the middle of the, um, of the cities and, um, there's no reason that you can't swing in for a couple hours if you're an out-of-towner. So we really want to improve some of our marketing strategies, um, work closely with our, um, Visit Brainerd and, um, Visit Brainerd friends and see how we can, um, expand our reach when it comes to tourism. We also have great programming. So when it comes to our educational programming, I think that there is great potential there for meeting some of the goals and getting more youth involved. And as soon as COVID is over and we can start getting people back in our buildings again, um, I think we have, as a team, um, some really great strategies on how we can get those, uh, those programs up and running. We also have some great partners in order to make that happen. So University of Minnesota, um, Extension Office provides the master gardeners and the master naturalists as volunteers for us. Um, we also have our Nordic Ski Club that helps us non-stop during the winter with our groomed trail system. Um, of course, we work closely with, um, the local school district, the YMCA, and of course, the city of Brainerd to make sure, um, we have some really great partnerships going and continue to be successful at the ARB. And then of course, we have our Haunted Trail fundraiser as our largest fundraiser of the, um, of the year. Um, and that, I feel, we've really put a lot of effort into the infrastructure, um, while still maintaining the integrity of the ARB and the integrity of the trail systems. So if we can, um, work smarter, not harder, um, on that event, um, it has the potential to increase revenue year after year. Next slide. And then some opportunities that we have. So we know that we, um, need some really clear marketing strategies and improved marketing strategies in order to expand our reach. We do know that there's some infrastructure that does need to be improved around the ARB. So, um, one of our older gazebos, for example, needs some, um, needs almost a complete overhaul. Um, it's been a while since it's been renovated, so for safety reasons and for, you know, uh, reasons of just being attractive to outside visitors, um, we'd like to see that be, um, be renovated again. We do need some, um, some improvements in our volunteer recruitment, but now that we have a volunteer coordinator onboard, we're hoping that we're moving in the right direction there. And then we do have unpredictable revenue streams. Um, we, we don't know if certain grants are going to, um, we're going to get them year after year. We don't know if certain donations are going to be annual or not. So, um, some of those, we would like to see, um, work, we would like to build better relationships, so those are being a little bit more predictable in the future. Next slide. And then oftentimes, when I'm presenting to the community, the question comes up, well, well, how can I help? And really, um, the community has done so much and so, is so supportive of the ARB already. But if you want to get more involved, there's opportunities to be on the Board of Directors, uh, to sit on some of our committees, including marketing and fundraising, and then just volunteering whenever you can at the ARB to, um, help keep it a beautiful place and a great community asset. So, um, ending my presentation tonight, I'd like to, um, just walk away with, you know, the ARB is a wonderful place. I have been so blessed to be able to work there and be a part of something so amazing. And if you guys have any questions, I'll give a few, few moments for that.
Thank you, Candace, for your annual presentation. Do any council members have comments or questions, Ted?
Yeah, I've got a question for Candace, if I may.
I bet it.
Um, Candace, first of all, congratulations on the successful haunted trails, uh, despite a lot of the challenges, so. Um, and I know you, you've had some challenges this year with membership largely due to COVID response, but I noticed, uh, going back in your slides, uh, there was a couple text boxes there, the online donation option and the online, uh, membership form. If I'm not mistaken, those were both kind of innovations this year as a response to that. Is that correct? And if so, how do people get ahold of you or reach out, uh, just on the website?
Yeah, that's a very good, thank you for that observation, Ted. I appreciate that. Um, yes, the online donation, um, option has kind of been, um, kind of a touch and go because of technology improvements, um, at the ARB. So they tried it a couple of years ago, I believe. Um, but now we're working with a really great, um, company out of Fargo that's, um, kind of doing our backend, um, credit processing. So they helped us put, um, put together something so that online donations come through automatically. Um, people can set up just recurring donations as well. We've gotten a few that just decide to do, you know, 20 bucks a month and that way they don't have to think about it. Um, and that's really great for our cash flow too. Um, and then as far as the membership option, yes, that's, that's new this year. So we're excited to be able to provide that. Um, and when Shelley, our membership coordinator, sends out renewals, that link is often in the emails that she sends out. So it's a really easy option for, um, people to just kind of click, make a couple clicks, enter their information and be done. Um, their membership card and their ARB life and their window sticker all get in the mail automatically, um, within a week or so. Um, and it's a really great option because then people that don't feel comfortable going out in the community right now can still keep their membership, um, up to date and they're able to use the ARB.
Very cool, thank you. Thanks, Ted. Any other comments? Kelly. You're muted. You're muted.
Thank you. Candace, you show on your revenue diagrams, 30% of your revenue comes from government. What percentage of that is the city of Brainerd?
All of it, actually.
So no other government entities give you a dime?
Not as far as I can tell. I believe the, um, actually, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna backpedal on that for a second. A very small amount does come from the city of Baxter in order for us to maintain the area right off of Excelsior. So that would be included in that bucket too. I apologize.
Mr. Chair.
Jan.
How much of, uh, the ARB is in the city of Brainerd?
Do you know those numbers, Candace? How many acres are in Brainerd as opposed to Baxter?
I would have to look up the exact acreage, but I want to say that it's like a 60/40 split, but I can definitely, um, send that along once I get that information.
Thank you.
Yeah, please send that to Jennifer, she can forward it out to the council. Any, any other questions? I want to say, great presentation. It was very thorough, Candace, and it, you know, one heck of a year to start a new job. I mean, especially in March, and it looks like you've done a great job, all things considered, so keep up the good work out there.
Thank you. It's been fun and, um, the, the community has been very supportive, so thank you.
All right, thank you. That'll move us on to six B presentation for the Brainerd Public Utilities 2021 Operating and Capital Budget. We have Scott and Todd with us. There you go, take it away, Scott.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everybody. We also have Commissioner Johnson with us here too.
Oh, that's Ted. I didn't even, didn't even recognize you, man.
I think if Connie can get to page one for us. Close. There you go. Well, page one, there's an overview of the, of all five departments and then going out for five years. We'll move on to page two. We'll get started with the electric department. Uh, not a lot of changes from here to here in the electric department. Um, if you look at distribution system improvements, that's just kind of rebuilding sections of town. We're in North Brainerd, uh, have been for the last two years. We're getting close to have that done. Then we're going to switch over to West Brainerd. That'll be our next piece we rebuild. That's that half a million dollar number there. Uh, right below that is 425,000 for the St. Joe's sub upgrade. Between that sub and the downtown Brainerd sub, that's what we basically serve downtown in the surrounding areas with, so. Uh, they're both fairly old. We're going to get St. Joe's sub rebuilt and then in a few years, we'll work on the downtown sub. Uh, number four there is the AMI upgrade. We're nearing the end of that. That was overall between the electric, water, and wastewater, about a two and a half million dollar project. We're close to being done with that. We'll be able to purchase the last of our meters early, early on in '21. And then it'll take us another year or so to get them all installed, but payments will be done. Um, scrolling on down, just some basic tool stuff, some service drop improvements, safety equipment. Uh, down there in trucks, we're looking at a new chipper and a new chipper truck in '21. We're going to reuse the, we'll be able to reuse the chassis, uh, for a different purpose in the future. So, but we'll get a new chassis and a new, uh, enclosed dump truck and then a new chipper. Then a new locator truck, um, looking at probably like an SUV for that, so. Uh, any questions on electric?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. Uh, so move on to page three, Connie, to the water department. Uh, same thing here for the first one, number oh-three there is. Uh, same thing here for the first one and number oh, three there is the well rehab. We're taking down a well each year. And just giving it a good overhaul. We'll be on our second one in 21. We saw a lot of improvement. Um, in the production of the well after we had him rehab. So it's a very good idea. Uh, the next item there is the water tanks that we've been talking about for a couple of years. Um, overall about an eight and a half million dollar project. This is replacing the 1932 concrete tank and the 1974 lead painted. Tank down at the water plant with uh, one two million gallon tank or a tank inside of a tank. We want a building with two tanks. It'll also get rid of the, we're gonna redo how we do our backwashing of the filters. So the, the light blue, which is also lead paint on top of the hill there on Mary Street, that tank will also come down. But we're working on, on design plans for those right now. Uh, we'll get those down to get on the list at the legislature to try to get some help for that project. Um, filter bed improvements under filtration and treatment facility. Uh, the $75,000, we're gonna, we're gonna re, we're gonna change out the media in two of the trains, two of the six trains. This year, um, the valves, actuators, that's just a lot of the, the, under the, under the beds. All of the piping that's in there, the pipe gallery, it's just updating that kind of stuff. Um, looking at maybe a new roof for the pop house. Wait to see if that might tie into the overall tank project. It depends on where that tank ends up. If it gets attached to that building, then we'll just meld it into that project. Um, down in distribution system, we've got a big number there for city water main projects. Paul has a lot of projects going on. In 21, so we're gonna make sure we get um, new water main where we need to, new hydrants, new services, upgrades and that such. So. Be a busy summer for us in that aspect. Uh, if you want to scroll down a little bit, Connie. And then just one, one new vehicle for the water department. Uh, a new mini dump. It's gonna replace a 98 model. So it's toward the end of its life and it's just a, it's a, that one is just a one-time pickup. Well, it's not a very big truck and those guys use it if they have a water main break and they're putting chunks of tar in there. Um, they're just making a lot of trips with that little old guy. So we're gonna get that guy replaced. So. Um, if you see down at the bottom there, then the grand total we have, oops, you skipped ahead. We, we peel out the stuff that'll either get bonded and or get some help from the legislature and or use lack funds. But the overall water budget of a million dollars is everything except for the two water tanks. So. Okay, Connie, on to wastewater. Uh, same thing here, some grounds maintenance. A lot of that is um, just doing some. Erosion control and some, some drainage issues that we need to take care of. Um, down to the improvements to the actual wastewater treatment plant. Um, we're looking, we started looking at uh, what we're gonna need for sludge storage. Um, going out, you know, like 10 years from now, gonna start doing some planning. Um, the EPA is talking about PFOS. I'm not sure if you guys have seen that, these forever chemicals. Um. We're not sure yet if any um, limits they're gonna put on us in the coming years. So we're kind of. We're slowing down a little bit on the design of that until we get, until they say what and if they're gonna do anything for limits. Uh, we're kind of looking at, at water too, but. So the $500,000 we're looking at spending in 2021. Uh, is to get, is to help us reduce the water that we're hauling to the fields with the sludge. If we can get some of that water off of there, we don't have to make as many trips out to the fields and save money on labor and on gas. We need to, that water has to go back to the head of the plant and start over. So we need to make sure that water isn't full of, you know, it's be way more concentrated water. And you could potentially shock the SBR building. So. We're gonna do a little, a couple of little studies and maybe do some, some minor improvements to make sure we don't send some bad water into the head of the plant directly. So. Um, down to the lift stations, that's another big one. We've got a total of, of 18 lifts throughout town. We have three main lifts, we'll call them, or big lifts. Uh, Evergreen is one of them. We're doing some upgrades there. Um, new screens, the pumps are probably okay, but we're gonna do. Um, inside of there, there's a bar screen and take some of the heavier stuff out, some sand and debris. Um, that stuff is very old. We're gonna get that replaced. We're replacing some controls. Uh, some fencing around it. We've got a, an issue with vandalism down there. Uh, more graffiti than vandalism, but painting on the backside of that brick building. So. We're gonna fence it. We also do have a backup generator in there. It's one of our. Our hurry up and get to places. If we have an outage, the guys have to run out there with a portable generator. You know, that's about an hour or so to get out there. So about all the, all the time we have before it starts to fill up. So. We can use that generator elsewhere. So we'll put a permanent one in there and then have that new portable one that's available for other places. And then the main lift, um, looking at an overhaul down there also. That again is, is from the eighties. Um, it's in the flood plain. Um, the pumps there are also doing a good job. We're probably not gonna have to replace pumps, but we need to make it floodproof. Um, there's some, some corrosion problems down there. So we need to get some stuff cleaned up. Um, it's also the, there's, it goes down the downstream from the main lift, which is in Rotary Park there. And, and then there's two valve pits in there, one valve pit on each side of the river with two 20-inch crossings. Under the river. So we only use one at a time. So the other one is basically a backup. So if we have a problem, we can switch them over. So. We've got some corrosion issues in those valve pits we need to take care of because when the, when those valves need to work, they need to work. So. And we'll do some architectural stuff down there to, to kind of spruce that up with the, you know, there's a way more traffic down there than there has been in the past. So. We want to make sure it blends in with the surrounding scenery and architecture down there. So. Go ahead and scroll down, Connie. Uh, no trucks. We are gonna get uh, one utility vehicle for down there. Um, for running from building to building down there, and that'll also be used for snow removal uh, to help the guys out down there. So. Okay, on to the next one, Connie. The hydro department, uh, do some building repairs. Um, under equipment there, you'll see uh, number oh, five is governor automation. We're going to install some automation on governors on two of the older machines. Um, and that will be our first step towards automation of the plant. Um, going back up there to number three, the turbine, we're pushing that out to 22. Um, as you're all aware of, we have that, uh, the test model that has never happened and keeps getting pushed and pushed and pushed. Um, as of right now, we said it got pushed till the spring again, but the commission has decided to. To move away from Amjet and his experiment. So. I've been working with a supplier and, and he's got me one number for a, a different kind of generator and he's working on. Um, two different companies to get some other pricing and some other options for us. So. Um, between, between that new generator and our empty pit six, and then the, the governor automation, those will be our steps towards automating that plant. So. Other than that, just some minor stuff for the hydro dam. And on to page six, Connie. The admin department there, uh, improvements of the service center, number two, that's some, we're gonna kind of rework our. Our front gate. We have an automatic gate into the wastewater plant that loops around to the, behind the service center, but. We're going to put an automatic gate on the front gate also. Uh, just to help control and keep unwanted guests out. They, I mean. Not doing anything wrong, but they get lost. I'm not sure where they're going. So we just all suddenly have someone driving around in the backyard and it's, you know, it's dangerous back there. So. Um, it'll help just uh, just secure the building better. Um, then down under information technology, some computer programs. Some SCADA upgrades, that's what we use to get information from our. From all of our lift stations, from the electrical substation. Um, from the water towers. It's how the guys get all the information back if there's alarms. Um, so we're gonna work on start to kind of rebuild the backbone of that thing. Um, what we, what we started out with was the wastewater lift stations here 20, 25 years ago. And we just kind of piggybacked all of the, the water and the electric and the hydro on top of that. So. They really need to have their own standalone system. So um, that's what that SCADA upgrades is for. And then the utility software upgrades, that's, we're looking at uh. That like the, the billing.
Yeah, the whole software for.
Well, the whole software for the billing system, the encode, whether it's a whole new system or, or a, or a massive upgrade. So. That's what that one 50 is. So. Um, that's the end of the capital budget. Is there any questions on anything with the capital?
I, I just want to go back to the turbine, Scott. So we, you have, you're not working with that gentleman with the prototype anymore and you are just. Moving ahead in 2022, we're gonna have a new turbine installed?
Yep.
That's good.
Yeah. So we're hoping, what we're hoping is that we can get one that'll fit in because. Amjet did a, did some civil work in that pit. So we're hoping that one of these three companies has one that'll fit right in there or fit in there with some minor. Modifications to the existing 63-inch ring there. So.
Okay. And then back up to the water storage tanks, that's like an eight million dollar project. If you don't get state bonding or. Help or are you pushing that back or are you moving forward with that in 2021 regardless?
No, we need to move forward with that. The concrete tank, we had the uh, sanitary survey from the Department of Health. And they said the concrete tank is time to, time to, to change it. So.
Okay. Well, hopefully we get the state help anyway. Any questions from council members, comments on the capital budget for BPU? Wayne, you're muted.
Yes, if I could ask, the hydro dam, is it, is this a good time to ask about that? How's that working?
Yes, it's working really great. Um, yeah, I mean, right now we've got five generators running at 100%. Water's perfect. We're spilling a little bit of water. Um, with, with a little bit of snow and then a little bit of melt that we keep getting from here up north. So. Um, we've got a lot of water that is gonna push us. Probably most of the way through winter like we did last year. We had a really good year last year and we should have another good year. Normally in the winter it starts to slow down. But um, the last two years, this year including, we should have a lot of water to keep us at 100% all winter long.
Yeah, and I think we'll see that in the operating budget that it is generating. We'll see how much it's generating and it's, it's quite a bit of power.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
It's about 11% of our, of our total load.
11% of the city of Brainerd's load is from the. Do we typically, does the council typically do a motion for the capital budget and a separate motion for the operating? Or is it generally one motion?
It's generally one motion.
Okay, so let's move on. If there's no other questions, we'll move on to the operating budget.
Okay, then, if Connie, if you'll go to page seven, I'll, I'll just spend most of my time just on that page. This is kind of an, yeah, yeah, whoops. There we go. This page seven is a summary of the three utilities that we operate and manage for the city. You know, it's got the electric department, which is about 72, 73% of, of the business. Um, then waters like 12%, and then the remaining part is, is related to the wastewater uh, treatment part of it. And so what I wanted to, to point out there is, is the 2021 column. So it's the one on the far right. Um, I'm anticipating that our total revenue from the utility, our, from our, our customers is gonna be 25.1 million dollars. And compare that to what, what I'm projecting for the 2020, which is kind of right in the middle there. That's like 25.0 million. So. I'm projecting the budget to be about 100,000 more than what our actual is for this year. Uh, which you could see that we missed our budget by some 800,000 um, due to, you know, we all know how, how 2020 has, has worked out. Um, you know, our, our electric consumption, sales of things are down about 5%. From, from last year. But so that number is projected to be 20, 25.1 million. Kind of in right below that is kind of the other sources of revenue. That we, that we get. There's some local option sales tax there from both Brainerd and Baxter. Um, the Baxter portion is related to the airport project. Um, we do get, we get reimbursed from Baxter for some operating expenses related to the waste treatment plant there. And so in total, the total revenue that I'm budgeting for 2021 is 27.9 million dollars. And the total that I'm projecting for this year was gonna be about 28.1 million. So. Overall, I'm projecting total revenue to be down approximately 200,000 dollars. Uh, on that revenue side. Going down then dropping down into the bottom part of that schedule is our, our, our operating cost. And as you can see, by far, the, the largest number is the, is the purchased power. Um, about a year and a half ago, we changed power providers and that has been a, a, a great thing. Um, the commission made a great decision there to, to change because the first year we saved over one and a half million dollars in power costs. Um, but as you can see, what I'm projecting for 2021 for power cost is basically 11 million dollars. Um, this year it's projected to come in at about 10.7 million. So it's gonna be up a little bit. Um, but uh, it's still a great, uh, great deal from what we had in previous years. Um, then I've got all the other expenses kind of listed there. So in total. Total expenses I'm projecting to be 26.4 million dollars for next year. And my projected for this, for 2020 was, looks like it's gonna be 25.7. So. We're gonna be up approximately 600,000 from what we had this year and half of that is related to the power cost. So the bottom line, the change in net position, I'm budgeting to be 1.5 million. And I think the end of this year, we're gonna come in at 2.3 million or 2.4 million. So it's going to be somewhat, you know, cutting back on what the bottom line is, but. Overall, 1.5 million is, is still better than what we had a few years ago. Back in 2011 and two, 2012, somewhere in that, those years. Um. So that is kind of just a quick overview. I, in the booklet that you have there, what you have on screen, there's several graphs and things. I wasn't planning to go through those. Um, behind page seven is the detail for each uh, department. Um, and so, and I think one of the things that uh, Scott had mentioned related to the hydro facility. It, you know, it generates approximately, it's, it, the savings up there is based on our power costs kind of thing. I, I do a calculation each month. And so it's like 1.1 million, 1.2 million uh, dollars is the savings and then we take all of our expenses against that. Um, and so as long as we're, you know, close to zero in that department. Um, that's a, that's a good thing because that depreciation interest and one of these years we'll be done paying off the, the bonds uh, related to that facility. So. But it does generate approximately, you know, 11% of our load. Um, another project that we are working on, which you don't see. In here is doing a solar project at the airport. And that is supposed to be about a 5.7 megawatt operation. That would add about another. I think six or 7% of our load would be coming from that solar um, farm. That will, that we hope and anticipate will be built next year. And uh, so that's kind of a summary of the operating. If, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Todd. Are there any questions on the operating budget for BPU for 2021? Wayne, the uh, page.
Wayne, the page twelve there is the power generation. Do you want to look at how the dam is performing as far as financially? But I don't see any other questions, so that'll be looking for a motion to approve. Oh, Kelly. You muted again.
I got the motion ready, Mr. Chair.
I'm ready.
Move to adopt or accept the BPU twenty twenty-one operating and capital budget.
Second, second, second.
Motion by Bevins, three seconds by Stunek. Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson. W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Ann Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. Thanks for coming, Commissioner Johnson. Todd and Scott.
Thank you.
That brings us to what was originally item number seven on the printed agenda, which is. The Council Committee Report. We'll start with the Safety and Public Works Alderman Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have three agenda items. Item number one is a resolution for. South Sixth Street Reconstruction for twenty twenty-two. The municipal consent, the motion is to schedule public hearing to receive. Public comment on the proposed layout of South Sixth Street at the December twenty-first council meeting at seven thirty and ISO move.
Lambert, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Ann Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Bevins.
Thank you. Item number two, Mr. Chair, is also a resolution on the same project, the South Sixth Street Reconstruction for twenty twenty-two. Establishing the right of way for storm pond construction. The motion is to adopt the attached resolution, which declare. Lot five, block two, self-edged addition to the public as road and building right away and ISO move.
Erickson, second.
I have a motion by Bevins, a second by Wayne Erickson. Is there any discussion?
I I have a question, and maybe Kelly can answer it, maybe Paul. These. This parcel for the storm pond, is it like across the street from American National Bank?
Yes, yes.
That's that's where it is, where there already is a little retention pond kind of there.
Yep.
Okay, that's that's what I thought. Any other questions? None, we'll vote by roll call.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Ann Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our last item is the alley garbage can placement exemption criteria. If I may, Mr. Chair. Turn it over to Engineer Sammy to explain the three criteria. Uh, the three primary criteria for the garbage can placement exemption.
Absolutely, Paul.
All right, thank you, members of the council. Um, so as you know, at the last city council meeting, we adopted an ordinance which changes some of the. Um, garbage can placement criteria around the city. Uh, the biggest, the two biggest changes are removing um, all the garbage cans we can to the alley for pickup by the haulers. And the other large change is that um. Uh, we we changed the time at which you can have your garbage can out to there really wasn't a timeframe. Um, on that, and we we changed it to point out your can note earlier than six P M. The night before collection. And taking it back in the day of collection. Uh, with that, um, discussion uh, came up, um, some. Uh, residents around the community that were concerned that they don't have good alley access, even though. Their residence might be located on the alley. They don't have a good way to access. Or pull their can back to the alley. So staff was tasked with coming up with criteria. To issue these uh, specific properties exemptions. Uh, so myself and the Community Development Director met, um. And we came up with three criteria that we believe would cover um, at least ninety-five percent. Of the situations we're going to run into uh, of people that may want an exemption. Uh, the first one is uh, non-adequate garage or driveway access. So basically, um, if there's no driveway back to the alley, um, or. A garage, um, that would um, be non-adequate access. Uh, we kind of defined what it is there. Um, adequate access would be defined as an area an owner or tenant would on a regular basis reasonably maintain during the year. For purposes of accessing their property for parking or storage needs. An exemption to alley pickup would be granted if the owner or tenant did not have adequate access to place a can out. The second criteria is for properties without a driveway from either the street or an alley. An exemption would be granted if there are physical barriers to can placement. So a barrier would be defined as any physical object, a fence without a gate, a garage. That doesn't allow for placement in the alley. Or a direct route to get to the alley for placement of their can. And the third one would be if you have to travel across another private property or public right of way to get a can out due to barriers or being landlocked. Um, so if these criteria are adopted tonight, we would go ahead. Make an application, um, and take receive um. Folks that may want this exemption, we would send up this application, and then staff would. Issue the exemption administratively if they met the criteria. Um, right now, the haulers have been working on sending letters out to some of the addresses they feel. May have adequate access to the alley, but choose to use the street. Uh, they, of course, would be the properties that we're looking at to either fill out the application. Or they would have to call their hauler and switch their um, call their pickup to the alley if they feel that they don't meet these criteria. So I guess I'll take any questions at this time. Otherwise, I think um, the committee has a motion for this.
Are there any questions? Or Kelly, you want to do the motion first? What do you think?
Uh, Mr. Chair, let's make the motion that to adopt the three criteria as presented.
Erickson, second.
I have a motion by Bevins, a second by Wayne Erickson to adopt as presented. Is there are there any questions or any discussion? I have one question, Paul. You're going to handle this administratively. But if you get to not, if you deny people. Do they get to like go to the council? Are we going to be hearing a bunch of trash can stories over the next six months?
You know, thank you, Mr. President. That's a good question. Um, so one of the biggest haulers in town. Uh, they formulated a couple lists, one uh, that they feel. Um, that uh, these residences don't have access at all to an alley. Those will be issued automatic exemptions. Uh, the second list was from their word about a hundred to a hundred ten properties they sent letters out to. Um, I think staff is going to be on the um. We're going to be conservative when we're issuing these. So I think that, you know, we'll give folks the benefit of the doubt. Um, in a lot of circumstances, we don't want to um, cause undue harm to people or um, just for a garbage can placement. It's really just trying to get as many as we can back to the alley. I think, you know, a lot of people already do do this, but there's going to be probably a hundred or. Two hundred residences that um, are in the situation where they might need an exemption. And like I said, I think staff. To be more on the side of cautious in issuing these and in making sure that we're taking. Um, every situation into consideration when we're issuing them. So.
Okay, one more question. Any of the three criteria didn't mention uh, mobility issues? And if we have residents who. Can't physically get to an alley?
Yeah, and that's something we didn't really want to get into, um, you know, asking about disability or anything from a resident. And so I think in those situations, like I said, we would be more in the. Inclined to just issue the exemption. Um, in that circumstance, um, obviously that exemption would travel with the property. Um, I think, you know, we issue it and. You know, uh, some rentals moves in there, you know, and it and it ends up being a problem again. We might have to relook at some of these, but. Um, I don't think we can get into the situation where we're uh, requesting that people uh, with disabilities or mobility issues.
Yeah, that's probably wise. Okay, my. Every time Connie shares your screen, my uh. Screen, I lose you all. Are there any other questions, Paul, or? Or the motion maker?
Mr. Mr. Chair, um, I just want to make a comment. I appreciate it that it's going with the property. Um, instead of by the with the owner, because it'll it'll save in the paperwork.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Ann Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. Kelly.
End of report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Why did you guys have to meet at six forty-five?
Garbage cans.
Oh, garbage cans was a long discussion.
Because Jan couldn't be on the video.
Okay, that'll bring us to seven, but was originally seven B, the Personnel and Finance Committee, Alderman Pritchett.
All right, we have eight, count them, eight items on our agenda, so we'll try to get through these quickly. Item number one is the approval. Uh, approve the hiring of Allison Timmons as a police records uh, management technician. And the motion coming out of committee is to ratify the hiring of Allison Timmons as police records management technician, starting at step one, which is twenty dollars and twenty-nine cents an hour. Effective November sixteenth, twenty twenty, and ISO move.
Second, second. We have a motion by Pritchett, a couple of seconds by Ted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yeah.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Ann Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Pritchett.
All right, second item is uh, police officer hiring ratification. Motion coming out of uh, committee is to affirm the hiring of Tyler Asop. Starting at L E L S twenty twenty, step one rate of twenty-seven forty-three an hour. With a starting date of December fourteenth and ISO move.
Second. We have a motion by Pritchett, a second by Ted Erickson. Any discussion? Alderman Pritchett.
Uh, just a couple of things. This would put us at twenty-three out of twenty-seven of our budgeted officers. Um, this is, as you might remember, there were three of them that were moving through the steps, and this is the first one. Uh, so the second one's moving through the steps and with a, and their tentative start will be uh, about January twenty-fifth or so. So we can expect to have another one of these coming at our first meeting in January.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Ann Johnson.
Yes, motion carries. Alderman Pritchett.
All right, item number three is to approve the hiring of paid on-call firefighters, and the motion coming out of committee. Is to affirm the hiring of paid on-call fighter firefighters. Trainee level would be Drew Beeson, Rick Kales, Rick Lee. And at um, the probationary level would be Henry Prescott and I saw move.
Second. We have a motion by Pritchett, a second by Ted Erickson. Is there any discussion? Yep.
Just so you know, the the ones that are starting higher are starting higher because of of previous experience levels.
Okay, and can you tell me how many paid on-call firefighters this will put places at?
I don't know. It'd have to go to Fire Chief Holmes.
Fire Chief Holmes here?
Yeah, thank you. This will put us at thirty-seven paid on-call firefighters.
Good, that's probably the highest number we've had in your town here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good, good. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Ann Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Pritchett.
That takes us to item number four, which is deferred loan subordination requests, and the motion coming out of committee. Is to approve the deferred loan subordination request for the owners of property two one four South Eighth Street. And one seven two three South Oak Street and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Pritchett.
All right, so these are coming from the Small City Development um, branch. They both have deferred loans with the cities and are looking to refinance. So the city is presently in second position and would remain in second position um, behind the primary mortgages.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? We'll vote by roll call.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Ann Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Pritchett.
Thank you. Uh, item number five is the assistant planner position. Um, so. Basically, this is, there's two motions coming out of committee. Um, the first one is to authorize staff to begin the hiring process for the assistant planner position. And that it be only posted internally at this time and ISO move.
Second. A motion by Pritchett, second by Erickson. Dave?
Okay, just a a little bit of information. This is not a new F T E. Um, basically, when the reorganization of the Community Development Department happened a while ago, they decided to go with the two housing inspectors. And see how the B S N A would work out for them. As it turns out, that there's there's still quite a bit of work that needs to be done with this. And so what happened is um, they're going to move that person into here and then. The take the position that hire, you know, at step, in the new person to a step level two. So if you need more clarification on that, you could probably ask uh, Community Director Kansky.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Ann Johnson.
No, that motion carries. Alderman Pritchett.
All right, the second motion is to approve the M O A between the City of Brainerd. And I V E W Administrative Support Union, setting the wage for the assistant planner position and ISO move.
Second. A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert. Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Ann Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Pritchett.
All right, item number six is the fire department purchase of a new fire engine. And the motion coming out of committee is to authorize Fire Chief Holmes to proceed with the purchase of a new fire engine using the H G A C purchasing process and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Pritchett.
Little bit of background on this. It it's uh, basically, it's on the fire capital plan. It's been discussed with the fire advisory board. It's going to be, you know, it's kind of like the partner of the one that we bought in twenty sixteen. Um, just a little bit on the H G A C. It's a competitive bid process that's compliant with state statutes. It's a lot like uh, the uh, Sourcewell. Uh, the cost of this vehicle is six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Um, there's also some discussion on some of the purchases like this. It seemed to be kind of like one year. If there's some way that we could get a budgeting process to kind of line that up, but it seems to be kind of difficult, but any ideas or suggestions to do so would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Ann Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Pritchett.
So item number seven was the non-working funds uh, twenty twenty-one budget discussion. Um, so we do have a motion coming out of this, so I'd like, we could do the motion first, and then if uh, any council members have. Questions on any of the specific areas, uh, they could uh, direct those to uh, Ms. Hillman. Um, the motion coming out of committee is basically to, excuse me. Is to pay for the the parking funds out of the capital budget. is to pay for the parking funds out of the capital budget, the 30,000 parking funds out of the capital budget, and to direct the Parking Commission to look into the issue and present recommendations to the council at an upcoming meeting, and ISO move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Jim?
This is here. The library fund. Can we go back to that for a minute? I was, well, if my memory serves me right, the library fund is reducing their budget to $10,000, correct?
It's about $8,000, yes.
$8,000? Okay. Is that reflected in this here at all? And where does that $8,000 go to? Where is it going back into the tax, tax rolls or what? You can help me with that?
Yeah, it's, we're using that $8,000 as essentially levy reduction. The library requested $155,000 last year. This year they're requesting 146. We are giving them exactly what they asked. No more. Connie?
Okay.
Clarify that when we adopted the primary budget or the preliminary budget, we adopted a 2% increase from the library. We are now taking the difference between the $157,000 that we had in the budget in September and the $146,000 that the library asked for, and we're putting that into the capital fund. And that's going to help us pay for the paving of the library parking lot. Because we believe that this reduction is a one-time reduction, a one-year. So rather than having the levy have peaks and valleys, we just moved it into the capital fund. So that next year, the library isn't requesting a $12,000 increase.
Yeah, next year, we don't think the library will be requesting, Dave, so you can heads up. I know you're the library liaison, but you know, I had a meeting with another library board member, and I think some other people in the council have talked to her as well.
I did too, yeah.
She is under the impression that we can, that it's sustainable to keep the library at $146,000 for a number of years because the Kichigami Regional Library lowered their dues. And she thinks that's a sustainable, a sustainable lowering because of how large their fund balance is, Dave.
Okay, having, that's the first that I've heard of this. That was not brought up to the library board at all. The major concern by the librarian was, this is a one-year deal by Kichigami. And it was made pretty clear to us as a board that it was a one-year reduction in the Kitchi ask. And that she was concerned that when we asked, the library comes back and asks for what they normally ask for, it would look like increasing their budget by that huge amount. So I mean, that's the first that I've heard, or, you know, I'm not sure if the other library board members heard this in a different meeting that I wasn't in, that they were looking at permanently cutting their budget by $8,000. But that's not the impression that I was under.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, so I had that conversation as well, and that's what prompted me to ask the question in committee. But yeah, my understanding was that the library had a reserve and so would be able to handle any, you know, increase or shortfall. And that that's the reason they wanted to have this $8,000 go back onto the levy.
That wasn't the discussion at the library board meeting, that we had a reserve. This is all prompted by the Kichigami system saying that due to duress because of the COVID situation that is put on municipalities, that they were considering, they were going to ask less of each of the individual libraries, their payment. And this was a one-year deal.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This is Jan again. And my conversation too with the member was the fact that the the parking lot would be able to be paid for from the library fund. Is that, is that, am I wrong? Is that a separate fund than in the capital in the city, the city?
The library doesn't have enough in that fund to cover a parking lot repair.
They have.
Design.
Yeah, Dave, I think they have like 30,000 or something in their capital fund, and that's, that's not a parking lot. Connie?
The only thing is if they could use the donated funds for that, but there's questions about what those donated funds, if there's restrictions on them or not, if they would want to use all those donated funds to pay for the parking lot. But the city had the parking lot in the facility study and had it in their capital plan to pay for that.
So Connie, is this $341,000 fund balance include the donated funds?
Yes, it does.
Okay, well, this, this budget, this operating budget right here is what the library requested. It's the one to fix. The council made a decision to move that additional 10 to capital. And so maybe we need to re-discuss that when we're discussing the capital budget, because this is what was requested, and then that additional $10,000 is, has been pulled out of the non-working funds and is currently out of the non-working funds. So when we readdress our capital budget and when we adopt our final budget and levy, I think we have the discussion on this $8,000 of library savings at that time. Because this is currently what the library requested.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. But I do agree it should go to tax relief, so I will make that argument when the, when the time is appropriate. But I don't think with this motion, it is that time. Any other discussion on the non-working funds? Connie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The other item that could be different is the hydrant budget. That the hydrant, it was brought to my attention that per the city charter, we should be levying 3%, or I mean, excuse me, we shall levy a rate of up to 3 mil. So the hydrant rental and current, if we would, if we would increase that to 3 mil, it wouldn't affect our overall budget that we need because all of those funds are transferred back into the working funds. So it would basically change the 201,766. It would increase that to 105,000, 208, but then the transfers out would also increase. And so basically, it has no net effect on the overall need for the levy.
So we shall levy 3% or we shall levy up to 3%?
We shall levy 3 mils in the hydrant.
3 mils, yeah, sorry. Yeah, well, if we shall levy 3 mils, we shall do that.
And like I said, it doesn't have a net effect because it goes into the current, it goes back into the working funds. So there's no big difference.
Right, and Dave, do we have your motion to adopt these already made?
Um, yeah.
Connie?
We don't need, we're not actually adopting these budgets. We adopt these budget at the next council meeting when we adopt the budget for a whole for 2021. But I wanted to get them in front of you in case you had any questions. The only, the adopt, or the motion coming out of the committee was that the parking lot fund, we would pay for the paving, that 30,000 would be paid out of the capital fund, and to have, direct the Parking Commission to review fees.
Oh, okay, so then I'll ask a question about the actual motion then. That $30,000, what parking lot is that paying for? The 30,000 we're taking out of capital?
It's paying for a portion of the Laurel Street Lot that we lease spaces for. They would be the alley parking spots.
So didn't we, we've been tinkering with the parking lot fund for years. And didn't we kind of identify that it should be self-sustainable and it covers the costs of the downtown parking lots?
It should, however, when we adjusted the rates in 2019, we knew that it wasn't keeping up with the capital, or that it wasn't keeping up with the capital. And so now this year, we are planning on paving that parking lot when we pave the other city parking lots. And so the 30,000 is the estimated cost related to this, the parking.
So is this a $30,000 loan to this fund from the taxpayers to the downtown businesses who use those parking lots?
It could be, but the reason I think this got brought up is looking at the history of the parking lot fund. We haven't always had it been self-sustaining. And so maybe this was the one time to allow it to move forward. It was just a suggestion.
Well, I, yeah, I just have trouble with that because we've had downtown people pushing for years to make sure that we don't take money out of this fund because it's only for downtown lot. But now they're also demanding that we take tax dollars and subsidize them. It doesn't make sense to me.
Mr. President? Um, if I remember correctly, that the city had borrowed money from the downtown parking fund? Is that true? And I don't think it was ever repaid back?
I don't know if it was ever part. I know they used the parking fund to pave the Hockey Rink in Bain Park and all kinds of non-downtown things.
Dumb things. Yeah, and I thought, I, Mayor had brought that up, I believe, Mayor Mink. Sorry, David. That money has been taken out of that for other projects when it was meant to be downtown, so.
Right, and that's, that's where I'm sticking on this, Jan, is if this was meant for just downtown, as Mayor Mink fought hard for for years, that this is a self-sustaining downtown-only fund, why are we pouring levy dollars into it when it should be downtown self-sustaining fund?
That, that I understand, Dave, but it's the fact that we borrowed, the city borrowed from that fund that was just meant for downtown to be other parking lots.
We made it specifically for downtown in the last couple of years.
Yes. Okay.
If I may, Mr. President, I think that if we were looking at the funds back in 2019, we knew that the parking lot funds weren't keeping up with future capital expenditures. This resurfacing is going to get us into a good position by the time the next 30-year resurfacing comes around. There should be enough money in those parking lot funds to perform another resurfacing. Really, right now, it's just we're trying to catch up. And while we're dealing multiple other parking lots, it makes sense to try to get the ones that are in the most need done, which I think the Laurel Street Lot totally is in the most need. And so that was kind of my thought process. You know, we've been behind in that fund for many years, and they're in some major need of repairs, and there's not really any other way to get it financed. I truly believe the next time this comes around, 30 years from now, we'll probably have enough money in there. I think we changed the rates. Right, Connie?
Connie?
Correct. If you look at the memo, there was kind of some options of how we could do this. And just one of those options was having the capital fund pay for the paving of the Laurel Street Lot. I mean, there's, there's, you know, maybe we just want to let it play out for a couple of years and see how the impact of the rate adjustments that were done in 2019 and then potentially what the Parking Commission recommends, maybe it'll even out after a while. It's totally up to the council. Those were just some options to get the fund balance positive.
Yeah, well, then, I, I'll vote for this. I'll quit belaboring the point on such a small amount of money. But I'm not going to forget this. And right now, this action we're going to take is making, we're saying the parking lot fund is not a downtown dedicated fund. It is just a parking lot flush fund for any, money from anywhere in parking lots anywhere. And I just want everybody to know that that's essentially what I think we're doing here because this is, was going to be just a downtown fund. But I'm done. Any other comments from the council?
I just want to say, you know, we're kind of looking at, the reason we voted for it the way we did is that we believe it needs to be done, not necessarily advocating that, you know, we push that money back and forth that way. It's also why we kind of want the Parking Commission to look into this and give us some recommendations on what would be the best, best course of action in the future.
Absolutely, that's, that's good. Anybody else? Hearing no one, we'll vote by roll call.
Pritchett. Pritchett.
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Yes.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Ann Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Pritchett.
All right, item number eight is the 2021 budget and levy, and I'm sure we'll have some discussion on this. But the motion coming out of committee is to recommend a 1% levy increase to be used for the truth and taxation meeting, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Pritchett, a second by Stunek. Alderman Pritchett.
The logic behind that is, and Connie can explain the funds and some of the changes, but in the circumstances that we have now with a 1% levy, we would still gain the benefits that we would have, you know, would be equal to the benefits that we had with the 2% levy increase that we had recommended at our last meeting.
Excellent. Any questions? Any comments? Connie?
Can I just share that the memo was, was, you know, we found the $91,000 of the transfer revenue from the construction fund. We had the enrollment changes. However, it was brought to my attention that there was the L E L S and Teamsters Unions actually will be moving to step seven in 2021. I did not think that anybody was eligible to move to step seven until 2022. However, there are five officers that are eligible to move, and it's estimated that that will cost us $20,500. So when we look at the budget, Sean.
You're budgeting to move everybody to seven?
Five of the officers.
Everybody who's eligible gets to move to seven?
Nope, this is only, five officers are eligible to move in 2021.
Yeah.
And so that, if you can keep going down, Sean, it would be the overview, if you want to use the bookmark. Actually, can we go back to that previous slide? We did talk about the park board. I did meet today with the park board president and vice president, and they, their recommendation at the park board on the 15th is going to have the the ask be reduced as what we currently have in the budget. They're not going to keep the ask the same as it was in the preliminary levy. So that is, you know, now we kind of have an answer to that as well. But if we go then to the next slide, the next page there. So basically, now the 7,000, or the $7,100,000 for the Personnel Services needs to increase again by about $20,500. If we increase the hydrant rental from 202,000, that will increase to, excuse me, that will increase to, if I can pull up there, that'll increase to 605,000, but then our other revenues will increase to 1.4 million. So now we're about, about $100,000. So when Mr. Pritchett was talking about, we'd be at the same position with the 1% as we were at a 2%. That's how we got to that arrival of the number.
So, okay, any other discussion?
Mr. Eric?
Jan?
So basically, you found some extra money that we don't need to levy, correct?
It was from council action back in, in last February, yes.
Okay.
We had the expense, but we didn't have the revenue.
Okay. And we're decreasing, decreasing by 1% our request of the levy.
It would be a 1% increase over the 2020 levy, and that's what the motion is, is that's what should be presented at the truth and taxation hearing next Monday.
But not the 2% that we did last meeting we had.
Correct. That's going down to 1%.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, thank you. Any other council comments? You know, I'll support this motion. Ultimately, I'm going to support a negative levy and not a 1%, but I imagine I'm not in the majority there. Seeing no other discussion, we'll vote by roll call.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Yes.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Ann Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Pritchett. Thank you. I see why you guys met at 6:45. So it was originally item eight unfinished business. Call for applicants, Mayor Bado. Oh my gosh. For those of you who are sleeping, wake up. The mayor's talking. It is a call for applications. Applications are, of course, available on the city website, dot CI dot Brainerd dot MN dot US. It's a great website. You want to see us there. Mayor recommends full TV Advisory Committee, one term expiring 2021, two terms expiring 2022. The Charter Commission.
The charter commission, we have two terms expiring 2020. And then we have two, uh, committees that we're also looking for, uh, member for the water tower team, looking for two positions and the commission, which we just heard all about. We got all this good stuff you get to do in that parking. All the, all sorts of asphalt, which is great. Uh, we have one commission available for that. And I will say this, that if, uh, any of the documents I signed today going out with all of the people that are potentially done with or need to reapply, you may have a lot of positions available on various different committees. So keep your ear to this wonderful station for further details.
Thank you, Mayor. And you're right about the parking commission. They just got 30,000 levy dollars to play with. Item, what was originally item nine, new business 98, conditional use permit. The agenda says Lincoln Education Level Four Special Education Facility, but I believe it's actually South Campus.
Mr. President, I can take that.
Yeah, Janzki, go ahead.
Yep. So this is the, uh, this is currently, yes, this is 400 Quince is currently the South Campus of the Brainerd High School. Lincoln Education Level Four Special Education Facility is as it was titled in their application. So I believe that's going to be the new, one of the new names of this facility. Uh, so this CUP request was submitted by Scott Whittmore on behalf of I A F D 181 uh, for the Lincoln Education Level Four Special Education Facility, which will be at 400 Quint Street. Again, this is the current location of Brainerd High School South Campus. Uh, this project will entail, it's going to be demolishing approximately 41,000 square feet of the existing building, which will become, uh, used as additional parking and remodeling the remaining 71,900 square feet uh, to be utilized by the Lincoln Education Center, STARS, and the Paul Bunyan Transition Plus Program. Um, the planning commission reviewed the CUP request during their meeting on November 18th. Upon review, the commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval of this CUP request with two conditions, one being that the landscape plan on the east side of the proposed parking lot be back, be brought back to the planning commission for approval. Uh, planning commission on that was just looking for a little more screening. Uh, really at the, uh, there's a green space right there, the intersection of South Fifth Street and Quince. So looking a little more screening there specifically because of that added parking that will be there. And then we'll bring you back a lighting plan showing the use of 3,000 Kelvin lights. Uh, that was something that was discussed. Uh, part of that was, that was discussed for the main campus, about 3,000 Kelvin lights. There was uncertainty whether or not that was something that was, that was um, specifically included in that CUP or that plan. Um, so Planning Commission is asking that I S D 181 bring that back just to make sure that the lights um, are consistent across the entire campus. And then the commission also in their motion cited staff's findings of that.
Hey, so Alderman, Alderman Lambert, give the motion out of.
Yes, uh, make a motion to, uh, approve the conditional, uh, excuse me, conditional use permit with the findings, uh, of that. And the, and the conditions placed on it for the 400 Quince Street, um, school district.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for Lincoln. Or not for Lincoln, for the this apply, this conditional use permit, we were just discussing that the planning zoning commission recommended with their recommended conditions. And with the proposed parking, the lighting for the proposed parking will be brought to the planning commission for the approval of a lighting plan. So any discussion? Done. We'll vote by roll call.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Beavens.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunich.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries what was originally nine B, consideration for adopting the International Property Maintenance Code. David.
Mr. President, thank you. So the Rental Housing Ordinance Committee, they've been meeting for a little over years. Committee is chaired by Alderman Lambert, um, really looking at section 425 of the city code. This is the Rental Housing Maintenance Code. Um, the last few years, there have been a few issues that have arose, risen, um, within our rental program. And so this committee was created to really look at our ordinance and try to, uh, make our ordinance operate better and make a, uh, better rental community within our, our, our city. Um, so what, what the, this item is for is after really looking through section 425, um, as well as some of four, section 450, that's the general property maintenance code for the rest, for non-rentals, for general properties. The Housing Ordinance Committee, uh, they looked through, they made some changes specifically to section 425 2020, which is the conduct on licensed premises. Uh, again, what purpose of this, this was the first area that they looked at and really looking at how do we, how do we keep landlords accountable, uh, for their tenants? And how do we communicate issues between landlords and tenants and the city, specifically Community Development Department as well as the Police Department? After reviewing that, they also went and looked at the licensing procedures and made, uh, recommend, are making recommendations, uh, to that as well. Again, streamlining things, there's a lot of things in the current 425, uh, that are not necessarily going to be there or redundant or just better ways to streamline the licensing for rentals. Um, as part of this process, as you can see in my memo, um, during these meetings that were attended, uh, some of them by myself, but also our housing inspectors, our building inspector, Jason Stockinger, uh, the building officials have been attendance. Um, former building official Chuck Arvidson brought it to the committee's attention um, that the International Property Maintenance Code, um, covers a lot of what is in section 425 as well as section 450. And might be a easier way to streamline our, our requirements and regulations in our code. Um, upon his retirement, the, the committee kept, uh, moving forward with reviewing section 425. And they did come to the, to the conclusion as well that the IP, the International Property Maintenance Code or IPMC would streamline the code. Um, and offered the ability to condense two sections of code into one, so section 425 and section 450. So we wouldn't have two sections of property maintenance. It would be one section. So it'd streamline our code. Um, as well as it would also provide automatic updating anytime a new version of the IPMC was published. This was something very similar that we did in 2019 with the building code. When we updated the building code, it was updated to pretty much say, we're adopting the Minnesota State Building Code. And that way, anytime the Minnesota State Building Code is updated, the city's building code is already updated. Um, so this way we would not have to up to update, we'd have to update our ordinance every time there's a revision. We'd only have to update our ordinance if there were things in the revision that we didn't feel like fit the city well. So having thoroughly reviewed it, uh, the committee is making the recommendation, uh, to council because, um, that the council consider repealing section 450 of the city code in its entirety and portions of 425 related to property maintenance, replacing them both with the International Property Maintenance Code. Um, I didn't include both of the, all those codes in the, uh, agenda requests purely because this agenda request alone would have been like 200 plus pages long. Um, there, there was a link in the agenda request to the IPMC as well as the 420, 425 and 450 can be found on the city's website. So at this point, what staff is just looking for is direction, uh, from the council as how to proceed. If this is something the councils, uh, would like to pro, uh, proceed with, or any comments, questions, uh, before bringing an actual ordinance amendment to the city council.
Thank you, David. Jan, anything to add from your committee?
Please, I would like to add, um, what David said, it will streamline a lot. Of the rental code, the 425, we are going to pull out, um, licensing, inspections. And David, I forgot the third one. Conduct on premises, contact, we're going to pull that out and that is going to be Brainerd specific.
Those three stay. Those three stay.
They three, those three stay, but we are going to, um, look at that and do some revisions on that. And of course, um, just like anything, if you change one, it's couldn't affect somewhere else and something, another code. You know, zoning code, but I think this is really the way to go. Um, and it would save a lot of time, I think, if we have to review this again.
Okay. Thank you. I, uh, I guess we'll, we'll take a motion from you if you have one.
Me? Sure. I would like to make a motion that the, we adapt the, uh, IPMC um, code with the understanding that we're going to pull out three portions. The licensing's, the inspection, and conduct on premises, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Lambert, a second by Pritchett. I've got two questions, maybe one question. Well, start with a comment. I know nothing about building codes. Nothing at all. I understand they can be onerous, complicated and whatnot. What are negative unintended consequence, what negative unintended consequences could the city or the citizens of Brainerd see by moving to the, the IPMC?
Mr. Trump, these are property maintenance codes, not building codes.
Okay. I don't know anything about maintenance codes either.
Well, I didn't either, trust me. Um, one thing, one thing, um, by adopting both of these, there is no double standards. Whether you're rental property, whether you're owner occupied, it's the same. You have the same criteria. A building is a building, house is a house. Um, that is, I think, the positive. And I, I guess after spending this time, I really don't see any negative on it, but David might have something to say about that.
Um, is there any negative of moving to the IPMC compared to what we currently have?
I don't really see a, a true negative to the community. I think one of the benefits of the IPMC that was discussed with the, with the commission and why Chuck Arvidson brought it up is part of the other thing. It's, it's the, the verbiage in the code is a lot more user-friendly. Um, there are, um, diagrams and things in the code as well. So it's a lot more user-friendly and for people to understand and enforce as well. A lot more definitions. Um, and then again, when, when it comes to updating the code, when the new IPMC code update comes out, it's just on staff to review it um, versus what the current code is and figure out, okay, is there, uh, anything new in this code that could have an, a negative impact on the city? And then calling those specifics out, coming to council and saying, okay, there's a new IPMC coming out. Our code automatically adopts it, but we want to change these few things. So be more on, on the staff side, uh, just as those new updates come out, making sure that we're on top of that so that we don't accidentally, unintentionally adopt something that is not, um, in the best interest of the city of Brainerd.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay.
Question for either Jan or David, if I could.
Yep.
Um, so I understand that those three portions that you mentioned would be pulled out and we'd maintain those locally. But then it would be, the rest would be auto-updated according to the International Property Maintenance Code.
Correct.
Of the, those portions that we would be, um, adopting from the, the code, what would, what do you, can you summarize the major impacts or what would be the most, the, the biggest areas of impact or change from the portion that we would be adopting, either, either of you, I guess?
Well, go ahead, Dave.
Well, there really isn't going to be much. I was talking about of the IPMC. What's the major change?
Yes.
Our current code, yeah.
Yep. There really isn't any major change. Um, as it was reviewed, and that's one of the reasons, uh, Chuck Arvidson brought it forth to the committee is because he really looked at the two while the committee was working through it, and it realized that they're essentially exactly the same, um, standards. And I, and so I believe that when this code was probably already, was written initially, it likely pulled out of the IPMC. Um, and so when he looked at it, he goes, he realized that it was essentially the exact same standards, but just worded a lot better. Um, so it's a lot easier for the, both the general public to understand and as well as we as staff to, to enforce and implement.
And, Mr. Chair.
Jim.
The other thing too, um, Ted, is the fact that is, it's now standardized between both, um, rental properties and homeowner. Um, that, that was a big contention about the, uh, with the rental was the fact that how come my house has, my rental has to be perfect? And yet next door could be home occupied. And granted, they can't go inside the home occupied, but they can still look at the exterior. So they basically to equalize it for everybody, I think is a very important aspect of it.
And ultimately, if I may, Mr. President, ultimately, I think the goal of this committee was really looking at how do we, you know, as again, I'll roughly 50% of the dwelling units in Brainerd are rentals. And so living within that reality, how do we really make, um, our rental program a strong program? And make our rentals, uh, not something that's degrading in the city, uh, but a benefit to the community. Uh, and that's really what the committee, the committee was looking at, knowing that, you know, 80% of our landlords are good landlords. Um, trying to figure out that 20% that is not meeting the bar. How do we, how do we get the, either get them up to standard or kind of essentially weed them out and get them to move on?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Good answer to your question, Ted. Yeah. So, Jan, go ahead.
I, the other thing I was going to say is I think it's going to make enforcement easier or more attainable than what we have now. And I, I think that is, um, going to be important to be able to, since we have it, let's enforce it where I think it was difficult to enforce the previous, what we have now.
Okay. I, I have one question. I, and maybe I, and let me know if I'm misremembering, but I thought this committee was formed after we had that tragedy over on June 1st, was it not?
Correct.
What, what coming out of this committee and what part of this motion is making any changes to the city code that could or would have helped prevent a tragedy like that from happening?
Well, our, I don't believe our code is going to prevent any of that. Um, or, or Dave, you have, uh, and the, the other thing too is um, looking at this, I really thought about this. We started this as a one-issue complaint on this committee. Once we got going in there, um, there was a lot of other problems going on, kind of all tied around in here. And one of the biggest things was enforcement. Everybody's not treated fairly, even on the rental side. But I'll turn it over to David and see what he says.
To your question, Mr. President, I think the main places where this potentially could help avert those situations. Uh, one is the conduct on premises section, which was the first section that, uh, the committee considered. And that would had, that had both, uh, community development staff as well as police department staff heavily involved in that. And really figuring out how do, how does the communication work between landlords, tenants, and, uh, the police department as well as the community development department? Because community development department would do the licensing, but when it comes to conduct on premises issues, that's on the police department side. And one of the things the committee really looked at is upping the communication with landlords, but also tenants. Right now, the code, the code reads is no communication. If there's an issue, goes to the tenant. And so there's going to be communication now that goes to landlords and tenants. Um, and then also it's a lot more, uh, strict on landlords when it comes to improvement plans. Um, if a certain level of, of conduct and premises issue happens, uh, for example, a dom, uh, a domestic dispute or disturbance is called on a property, um, the police department requires that the landlord write a, a written management plan. How are you going to make sure this doesn't happen again? Um, and our current code is kind of soft on that. And the new updates that the, that the commit, committee is looking at, um, adopting, would like the council to adopt. Um, put a lot more pressure on that where they have a certain amount of days to respond. And if they don't respond, their licenses are going to be in jeopardy. They're going to be issued citations. So it really makes sure that if there is a conduct on premises issue, that the landlord handles it.
Okay. So follow up on that if, so we're adopted. If, so we're ad- adopting or po- we're going to consider adopting the International Property Maintenance Code, but that's not the culmination of the work of this committee. They have actual other recommendations to improve and streamline our conduct on premise and other parts of the code. We're doing more than just keeping those three parts, but we are going to also improve them to improve the safety of our neighborhoods.
Yes, absolutely. Those are the main parts. And the IPMC was really just, as they were looking through this code, they realized, hey, here's an opportunity to really streamline this whole thing. But the focus is, as, as Alderman Lambert originally pointed out, is the conduct on premises, the licensing, and then also inspections as well.
Thank you, Jan.
And, Mr. Chair, the other thing too is that we want to move it faster instead of, um, help me out, Dave, if I'm getting this wrong, but instead of taking three months to get to this point, we're saying it's got to be done with 30 days. What's, the time, uh, excuse me, the timelines to get, um, where we need to get into the council is a lot faster. Is that correct, saying that way, David, that we are, our timelines are?
If she's specifically talking about enforcement actions, if there's an issue that's not being addressed by a landlord, um, it moves, the process moves a lot faster, um, to it, for, um, potential, uh, taking a license, revoking your license, or suspending a license, it moves a lot faster versus the current process.
Ted, President. Uh, sorry to speak again here, but, and, and I know the committee's done a lot of work, and I, I don't want to be the guy to pump the brakes on this, but, you know, is there the opportunity for this committee to, to give us a presentation? I guess beyond what we've heard tonight to kind of talk about? You, you referenced the, the volume of the document and, um, I think there's just a lot to digest here, and I was, I'd be, I'd be curious to learn more about it.
So, if I, if I may, Mr. President.
Yep.
Um, to Alder- Alderman Erickson's comment. So what the motion here tonight, obviously, this motion will not adopt these things. Um, this motion, it really is what staff is seeking, its direction is, okay, move ahead towards this, um, which next process is, would be, and this would have to be adopted by ordinance. So now that we have that direction of the council's interested in moving forward, yes, we will bring, kind of, the whole gambit will come before, um, the council. So the, an ordinance, the ordinance adopting the IPMC piece will actually be quite simple like it was with the building code. Um, but the revisions and inclusions for, um, conduct on premises, inspections, and, um, licensing, though, all those issues will be called out directly in the code, so you'll be walked through all of those changes and what, what the, what the desired language will be.
Yeah. And, Mr. Chair, the, they help, we needed this help from the council because we need to go down the path of IPMC or we go over the path of redo what we have now, which we've been working on. So most of that's done, but we just needed the direction, which way do you want us to work? Because if you want us to work with IPMC, that basically is easier for us. But if you want us to go the other way, we can do that too, but we haven't. And Wednesday, we're going to sit down with another meeting, so.
Okay, thanks, Jan. Any comments from Wayne, Kelly, Kevin, Dave? Kelly? Muted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to go on record that it's actually been three years since the, since the council put this committee together. And I certainly have no problem with the, um, you know, the International Property Maintenance Code, but I certainly want to remind the committee that the question from citizens was how can there be stronger consequences for landlords' actions that, that allow conduct on premises to escalate to the point where it was three years ago? And I, I just think, I really think some of the, some of the, um, you know, some of the dissatisfaction in government is shown right here that it's taken three years, and we still don't have any kind of, anything at all towards that.
Yeah, I don't.
It was 2018 when that happened.
Mr. Chair, I don't, I don't want to set up an argument, but it was, we started in December 2018, we'd take the summers off, we met twice a week for an hour, and now we're meeting tw- or twice a month for an hour, and now we're meeting twice a month for a year and a half, and then COVID threw a, uh, thing in it. But yes, it looks like three years and that, but we didn't do three years. You know, there's six, nine months that we didn't do anything, so, because of.
Okay. Thanks, Jan.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, uh, jump on with Kelly there real quick. I was on ESPNW when this came through, and, uh, I'm going to apologize for voting in favor of this because this has been a process that is just dragging on, and I'm glad we're getting to some kind of end to this, but this is not at all what I envisioned would be happening. And I, I, I agree with Kelly that it's frustrating to see this drag on. And we're, we're to the point where we're about to adopt international guidelines on something that came up three years ago. It's just, I, I hope we get to an end on this, is all I will say.
Thank you, Alderman Stunek, or Pritchett? Or Wayne? Okay, so seeing no more discussion, I, I'll close it out by saying, I, uh, you know, I agree with Kelly, and it is a little ridiculous. And the, the, what was set, what the committee was set out to do was help improve the safety of our communities. And just coming back with, this is, is, is almost lazy, and it's almost like we just let the landlords tell us what they want to do, they don't want to do more work, they just want to be, they want to be fair and even with the owner occupied units. And it's really what, what we want is a way to hold bad landlords accountable as quickly and as effectively as possible. But I'd, I'll, I'll support this, and we'll move in that direction, and with the changes that are going to be recommended for conduct on premise, that, that, that may have some actual improvement to it. With that, we'll vote by roll call.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Yes.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes, yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Ann Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries to what was originally 9C, the first reading proposed ordinance 1513, ordinance amending the Brainerd City Charter. Who's taking this? Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Jennifer?
Yep, members of the council, uh, Mayor, thank you. I'm just going to be brief, uh, you're going to hear mostly tonight from Attorney Langle. Um, but just to kind of bring you up to speed, the Charter Commission met, uh, on September 29th to first discuss the review of the charter. They decided to review the charter in phases with the first phase really focusing on those provisions that are either duplicative or inconsistent with state law. Um, on November 6th, or November 5th, sorry, uh, we did email out to the council, um, the redlined version. The Charter Commission did take a look at this, and they are recommending, uh, these changes to the city council for approval by ordinance. Um, because there were so many, uh, redlined, uh, so many changes in that redlined version, we wanted to make sure that the council had it in plenty of time to review the changes. And then with that, um, Attorney Langle is just going to kind of go over, um, briefly what those changes entail. Um, and we are certainly available to go into, uh, all and any detail you would like us to. So with that, I will turn it over to Attorney Langle.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President, Council. So, as Jennifer said, we're doing this in phases. And this first phase, and frankly, even the second phase that's, um, coming up, are not intended to be at all controversial. These are cleanup, um, cleanup provisions, really. This, this first phase, we're looking at provisions that are not consistent with state law or simply duplicate state law. None of these changes are intended to impact how the city operates, are not intended to change anything the city does, not intended to remove any power or authority of the city under the charter. It's truly cleanup, uh, cleanup type redlining. This is Noel Charter, it's got a lot of stuff in there that just doesn't, uh, used anymore or is simply not consistent with state law. And so, this first, this first run-through was really looking to see, okay, what, what in here just doesn't, doesn't work in the state laws? No, it's no longer, it's no longer consistent. The state legislature's moved on over the years and, and, and left the charter behind in a sense, if you will. Um, and that's what we've done, we've gone through here and just, we truly just try to clean it up. And again, it's not intended to change anything that the city does, is, is on a day-to-day basis, it's just, uh, it's just the first run-through of just trying to, to clean, to, to clarify, and, and to make it consistent with state law. There are situations where a charter can be different from state law, um, but there, we're not addressing those in this run-through, this first run. We're just looking at issues where, uh, the city has to follow state law. And it is following state law, but they're not necessarily following the charter because the charter is inconsistent with state law. So, uh, that's what this was for. And a lot of it, I think, is, is pretty straightforward, um, pretty self-explanatory. I'm not going to run through every single piece of redlining, it's, it's 9:35 at night, it's been a long meeting. Um, but I'm certainly more than happy to answer any questions about specific provisions if anybody has any questions on them.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may just add one thing, um, so the Charter Commission did meet, um, in November and reviewed these changes and did unanimously vote to forward these recommended changes to the council. I do know that we have a couple of Charter Commission members that are in attendance at this meeting. Um, I believe Mike O'Day is here, Kevin Jaeger is here, and then Kelly, um, uh, Alderman Evans is the liaison to the Charter Commission. So just, so you're aware that, I know we have a couple of members on the calls here.
Mr. President, Pritchett? I, I didn't hear if you said this, Joe, so I just, to get a clarification or a reiteration, to change, to amend a charter takes a rec- in this process that we are choosing to use, it takes a recommendation from the Charter Commission and then a unanimous vote of the city council to adopt the final ordinance, correct?
Yeah, that is correct. So there are different ways of changing a charter. This one is, um, the one that you indicated, it, it is a recommendation for the Charter Commission to the city council, like you said, requires unanimous votes. And, and again, we, the commission is starting to go this way with these different phases, precisely because of, they thought this would, would get, you know, be approved by the council because it was, this is cleanup stuff, so they didn't think any of this would be controversial. So that's why we're using this approach.
Okay, Alderman Bevins, you have a motion?
Yes, sir. I immediately hold the first reading to ordinance, I think it's 1513, in dispense with the actual reading.
Lambert, somebody.
A motion by Bevins, a second by Lambert. Is there any discussion? No, I, I will just say, the mayor has been lobbying pretty hard to save the section that lets him appoint watchmen, but I'm not going to vote no. I'm going to vote yes.
I would have thought he even wanted to keep a posse.
Listen, there's not a lot of, of power in this mayor position, but the appointing of watchmen and, and posses, and the fact that this is going away is disturbing. And I, and I have to, I have to speak up, you're honor correct.
You just have to use your discretionary budget.
You have to hire. Well, the mayor's contingency fund will now be 100% for posse.
Any discussion from the council?
I'm willing to be on that, posse. This is.
And seeing no discussion, we'll, uh, dispense with the actual reading and hold the first reading, although, uh, we'll vote by roll call.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Can't wait, yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Ann Johnson?
Yes, and that motion carries, so we'll hold a public hearing at the next meeting is the process here. Great, moving on. Number 10, public forum. Anybody here from the public want to speak about matters not on the agenda? Me. Unmute. Number 79 is, that's probably Tiffany, I guess.
Sean, are you able to unmute that, the caller?
I am not, I sent a request to unmute, but they haven't unmuted.
They must not want to talk that, that hard, then. So I don't see Mike O'Day or Kevin Jaeger jumping up or down. We'll, uh, move on from the public forum and go on to staff reports. Anything updated since the reports were submitted?
Mr. President?
Jennifer?
I do have just a couple of things. Um, Lum Park Master Plan, I just want to let you know that we will be meeting with Widseth to discuss the next steps of the Lum Park Master Plan. Now that the children's museum, um, has formally withdrawn from Lum Park, we are still looking on how we move that master plan forward. We plan to have a discussion with the park board on December 15th at their meeting, and then, uh, to have it on the city council agenda on December 21st. Uh, the other thing I did want to update the council on is just the interim public works department. As you know, uh, Parks Director Saylor is retiring on December 18th, effective December 19th, uh, the city engineer Sandy will take on the duties as, as the interim public works director. Um, we also had a discussion internally and with the park board in regards to the recreation coordinator, uh, so we will be discussing that with the park board on December 15th. And I also expect to bring a recommendation to council after the park board, uh, discusses that and how it looks with inside the city's organizational chart. And then my last thing, I think we've talked enough about it, but I'm happy to say that the, uh, parking commission, uh, will be meeting, Community Development Director David Chansky is going to be the staff liaison, and I know that he has already sent out a doodle poll to these, those parking commission members. So stay tuned as we move that forward, and that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Bergman, Paul Sandy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Uh, one thing that I reported on last time, the Chunk Highway 210 corridor study survey is still out. It'll be open until, I believe, the 12th, uh, so that would be Friday this week. Make sure you're passing that information along to anyone and everyone that will fill the survey out. Uh, just kind of goes over how you utilize Highway 210 on a daily basis, what, uh, people see, what issues, um, kind of getting our, uh, our process started on public engagement. So please fill that out yourself and pass it on to anyone that would fill that out. That's it.
Thank you. Paul, Tim?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Oh, okay. Any other updates from staff? Chris?
Just a reminder, our police chief interviews are this Thursday. Um, the city council portion will start about 1 o'clock. You'll be getting some information in the next day or so, as far as when all the interviews are for the candidates.
Thank you for that. Any other staff reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to the mayor's report.
Muted, Mayor. You're muted.
Shortest report ever.
Of all things, you would think that I would know how to let myself speak. Uh, we got one thing to go through here, and it is a proclamation. Oh my gosh, you were not prepared for that. It's a curveball. So we have a proclamation tonight, and I'm going to read it to you right off this little screen here. It says, whereas the city of Brainerd is dedicated to the celebrate, celebrating the life and history of our area, and the water tower is an important part of the collective history, we should be remembered. And whereas the Brainerd Water Tower has and remains to be an icon of the city of Brainerd and celebrated as a national registry of historic places, and whereas the city, the Brainerd Water Tower was first continuously poured concrete water tower in the world, dreamed up by and designed by engineer L. P. Wolf. And whereas the water tower has 100 years, serving as a symbol and logo of our city and our community. And whereas, December 10th, 2020 marks the 100th anniversary of the completion of the water tower. And whereas the water tower has been subject to years of harsh Minnesota conditions and the physical structure, grown wary, and whereas member of the community has undertaken a serious effort to save this iconic piece of Brainerd's history, whereas the Brainerd Water Tower is an important landmark to our city and the history, and it should be restored to as many, or to, it may serve as a community icon for years to come. Therefore, being resolved that Mayor Bedell hereby proclaims December 10th, 2020, as the 100th anniversary of the Brainerd Water Tower. And with that, I knight, whomever I knight. And with that, I knight whomever I knight.
Is that the entire teacher report?
I I'm, this is the longest meeting we've had in a long time. I'm going to let it go. So that's the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Bedeau. That brings us to council member reports. Oh, we have a closed session tonight, too.
Can't wait.
Alderman Pritchett, we'll start with you.
I have nothing to report.
Alderman Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, uh, to confirm what Scott Magnuson said, the North Side, uh, electrical upgrades are taking place as we speak. And we just lost power to about 30% of the North Side, uh, this evening while the PUC is moving power cables. So that's happening right now.
Thank you, Alderman Bevins. Yeah, you had to leave your office from right home to come back and join us.
No internet.
Alderman Lambert.
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Stunek.
Whereas I have nothing.
Alderman Tad Erickson.
Uh, thank you. Nothing to report tonight.
Alderman Wayne Erickson.
I'm just glad to be alive. Nothing.
All right, I'll just say, uh, I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving and I hope they all have a good Christmas upcoming. Everybody stay safe. As, uh, Alderman Pritchett would say, be kind to one another. With that, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to return to closed session pursuant to statute 13D.0, we're going to discuss labor negotiation strategy.
Second.
By Pritchett, second by Lambert. Do a roll call vote.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. We'll take a two minute break to get the right people in and out and.